Welcome to the Elk River Area Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forum for Elk River City Council. My name is Kevin Bergstrom and on behalf of the Elk River Area Chamber of Commerce Government Relations Committee, I am your moderator for tonight's event. I'd like to start by saying thank you to the city of Elk River for allowing us to use this space and recording equipment for our forum. And I'd also like to thank the candidates for being here tonight to help us provide important information for voters before they head to the polls. Tonight's event is being broadcast live and will be rebroadcast on Elk River TV 180, as well as the chamber's website and social media channels. The Elk River Area Chamber of Commerce does not assume any party affiliation nor do we endorse any candidate. We are hosting this forum to provide information about the candidates to the general public. Since this is a public information forum and not a campaign event, we respectfully request all candidates and audience members would refrain applause or comments that would cause a disruption during the live broadcast. I am joined tonight by Cindy Hemmer, who is a member of the Chamber's Board of Directors. She will be the timekeeper. And each candidate will be given three minutes to respond to the questions asked. If it's needed, Cindy will provide you with a signal when you have 30 seconds left. That's the yellow one. When you see the red signal, that means you've gone over the time limit and should stop immediately. Each candidate will answer the same questions and we will rotate the order of who begins. To start our forum, each candidate will have up to three minutes to introduce themselves and provide a bit of information on why you're running. At the end of the forum, you will also have three minutes to wrap up your thoughts or cover any topics that we did not ask you. So with that in mind, are there any questions?
No.
Nope.
All right. Also feel free to remove your mask while answering the questions. So as I mentioned, we will start with some introductions and just a bit of information about yourself. We're going to start with Ward Three and we'll start with Mike Byer.
Thank you very much for having us here today. I first want to acknowledge today is the Navy's birthday. 245 years ago today, the Navy started, and I'm a proud Navy veteran. Go Navy to all my shipmates out there. I moved here 14 years ago with my wife and Stacy and my two children. We moved here because we had the opportunity for our son, who is autistic, but we believed the schools were fantastic. We also saw that the parks and wrecks were good. We also believed that there was some very good nonprofit organizations that we really cared about. So those were the reasons we moved here 14 years ago. Currently, I'm a general manager of a large business. We have a multimillion dollar operating budget that we deal with. So I deal with it on a daily basis and look forward to the opportunity to work here with the city as well if elected. I'm very active in a lot of the nonprofit organizations, including the Elk River American Legion, where I actually served as the commander. I also have attended and represented our legion at the district, the county, and the state level. With all of this has gone on through my time, I felt that this was a natural progression to be a leader here in Elk River. And that's one of the reasons that I'm running for this position of city council for Ward Three. I love Elk River, and I consider myself a citizen ready to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Also running in Ward Three, Josh Hassing.
Again, thank you for having us. My name is Josh Hassing. I am running against Mike Byer for Ward Three. My fiancee and our two children moved here for actually a lot of the same reasons you did, where we liked the schools, we liked the parks that were available. The city just kind of drew us in. I am currently the Director of Retail Operations and Regulatory Compliance for a multimillion dollar company based in the cities. That puts me directly responsible for finances, inventory, personnel management, and also working with state and federal government agencies to make sure that we remain compliant. Completely lost my train of thought. I apologize for that. I decided to run for Elk River City Council because one of the reasons my family moved away from where we lived in Hopkins was because it seemed like the city council no longer listened to its residents. And they had a very, very aggressive tax and spend policy. And instead of moving to a new city and then complaining if it happened again, I decided to actually step up, be a leader, and try and make sure that we can all be happy and proud of the city that we live in. Thank you.
Thank you. In Ward Two, I just wanted to note that Mary McDevitt Krailcheck was not able to join us tonight. But we do have a current council member, Matt Westgard.
Thank you, Kevin. First, before we begin, I just want to thank you, Kevin, for moderating tonight, and Debbie Reiberg in the chamber for hosting this event. You know, given this year's circumstances with the pandemic and so many events being canceled and, you know, the lack of gatherings, it's made it really difficult this year to get the message out and get to voters so that people are well informed when it comes time for Election Day. And that's probably one of the most important things I think I have a passion of all, is whether we agree or disagree is that, at least when you come to the polls, that you be informed. So thank you for hosting this and giving us an opportunity in a forum to get out to the taxpayers. I currently sit on the Elk River City Council as a Ward Two representative. I have a passion for our community and a passion to be involved and a strong desire to give back to the community where we live. My wife and I moved to Elk River nearly 25 years ago to start a family, raise our family. Have loved the close-knit family, small-town feel Elk River has been. We've seen a lot of growth in the time that we've been here, but still it never has lost its identity. And I'm running for city council seat Ward Two because I still have that passion and still want to be involved. And as long as the voters would like to have me to continue to serve, I'd love to continue to serve those residents. I am involved in a fair number of other commissions, sit on the Elk River Utility Board. In my private life, I am a general manager for a local organization, a millwork distributor, Heritage Millwork, that has a distribution center in Ramsey and another facility here in Elk River. I've been involved in business management in that construction supply and industry, construction industry for about 35 years. But first and foremost, want voters to know that my duty and my responsibility, if you see fit to continue to vote for me and continue to be on city council, is that I'll be an advocate for you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Moving into our actual questions here, and we are going to stick with Ward Two to start, so Matt, this one's coming to you first. There is a large redevelopment project in front of the city council for the downtown district. Do you think downtown Elk River should be redeveloped and why or why not?
Well, first and foremost, should downtown be redeveloped? Obviously, all cities, you know, go through some sort of transformation of development and then redevelopment, and really guided by the EDA and the HRA. Does the downtown need to be totally redeveloped? No, I don't think it needs to be totally redeveloped. But there are times when a private developer will approach the city with an idea in terms of enhancing the experience or the downtown, you know, business community or attractions. And it's important to listen to what those proposals are. I do believe that there are some opportunities to have some redevelopment in downtown where it would help the existing businesses. But there's a lot of things to consider with a proposal that's of the magnitude that, you know, Modern Construction has put before the council. First and foremost, it can't be at the cost of all of the existing businesses. So, you know, a project of that magnitude for our city is quite large. So I think all of those things need to be taken into consideration and be met with at least some level of scrutiny to make, ensure that the existing businesses aren't compromised. And then finally, the whole question of public-private partnership. I'm not against public-private partnership, certainly am open to listening to it, but it has to be right for the city as well. There has to be a good balance between the amenities that are provided by the development for the public investment that would be into the project.
Alrighty, thank you. Moving to Ward Three, we will go with Mike Byer, same question. Do you think downtown Elk River should be redeveloped? Why or why not?
Well, I have the same thoughts as well, too. Do I think it needs to be redeveloped? No. But could it? Yes. You know, our local businesses are our backbones of this community, and there's a lot of them there that would be affected by this. But on the other hand, there's also a local business called Modern Construction that absolutely could help us. They've got a lot of great ideas. I was very impressed with his presentation. Also, I sat through a planning commission meeting, or planning meeting with the city council after that and listened to him a few weeks later and was very impressed with how he came. But I also like to look at it from this perspective, in the comp plan. If you look at the comp plan, there's a few things that say, is this project consistent with land use to the plan? Does the project move Elk River towards its vision to the future? And is the project consistent with the policies contained in the plan? And you know what? It checks a lot of the boxes in this project, okay? But also, there's things that you really have to look at, and this has to be a complete vetting that has to happen, which means it has to go through the whole process, meaning that we have to bring it through the staff. We need to bring it through the planning commission. We need to bring it through public hearing. And let's hear what the citizens are here to say, because I've had a lot of people come to me about this and had conversations about this. And it's kind of split. There's some people very excited about it, there's some people that are not so excited about it. So I think that's really, we really have to vet this thing. The other thing is Highway 10. Who knows what's going to happen with Highway 10? We don't know how that's going to go through here, so we really have to keep an eye on that. And also, there's a lot of people that own a lot of property through there, and there's a lot of things that have to happen and have to fall into place. So to answer your question, I'm for it, but it has to be the right job or the right project.
Thank you. Same question, Josh Hassing.
Thank you, and I think I'm going to have to deliver the hat trick here and say I don't think it needs to be redeveloped. But again, I am open to that discussion and the possibilities that that discussion may bring. My main concern is some of the proposals that have already been made. Mainly the parking ramp that was proposed to be built downtown. Our downtown has a very unique image and, you know, an identity all its own, and I think a parking ramp would take away from that. However, if that issue could be resolved, I would be more willing to hear more details regarding that. And again, with Highway 10, I think it might be the best option for us to hold off on any major plans regarding downtown until we know what's going to happen with Highway 10, especially with the project for 169 coming in in the next few years. We're going to have to take a look at the entire city before we can take a look at downtown to see what traffic is going to do in our city.
Alright. Thank you. Boy, you guys are mentioning little tidbits about the next questions to come up, so that's good. I like that. I like that. Our next question does have to do with comprehensive plan. It's going to go to Mike Byer now first. "The city of Elk River will be faced with many new opportunities after the Highway 169 redefined project is completed in a few years. Currently, the city is reviewing their comprehensive plan. What ideas do you have that you want to be considered in this review?"
Okay, thank you for the question. First of all, I just want to make sure that, I've actually read the comprehensive plan a few times, like everybody on this panel. And the thing that really stuck out to me is actually is my takeaway is that the comprehensive plan is about planning for the future of Elk River, okay? And it's also guiding change in a positive way. Remember that, a positive way. So with that said, the most important thing for me, too, is with a 40% increase, when you look at that, a 40% increase in population since 1970, every 10 years we've gone 40%, and now at least minimum. And now, who knows what's going to happen in 2020 once this is complete, okay? So in my eyes, we need to make sure that we grow responsible and that our identity per our mission statement. We have to be balanced with our commercial property and our residential property, because what's happening here is once 169 is complete, who knows how many people are going to be coming through our town? And who knows are going to start moving towards our town, because it's going to be a great opportunity here. But the biggest thing we want to do is make sure is that, is this comprehensive plan right now. And if you haven't had an opportunity to get in there, dig in there, and give some information, please do. It's very important that we do this as a team. And everybody together in the city of Elk River work together and come up with these things. Because this is where the advertising starts for the city, and this is where we recruit our businesses and our citizens to move here, is by looking at that comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question regarding comprehensive plan. What ideas do you have that you want to be considered in this review? And moving to Josh Hassing.
Thank you. One key part of the comprehensive plan, and it's noted right towards the beginning, is maintaining the character that Elk River has. And I agree that Elk River needs to grow, and I have no doubt Elk River will continue to grow. We have a lot of land that is owned by the city currently that is currently not developed in any way, shape, or form. We can look at starting to develop that. I think a nice way to offset some of the costs would be to bring in a public-private partnership where we could allow developers, whether for apartment buildings, single-family units, or even commercial properties, to come in and potentially look at building on that land. However, that being said, we also need to make sure that we continue to keep our character for the city, which, yes, we have the small-town feel, but we also have that unique feel of being a rural community. You know, on one block, you can be knee-deep in houses, and then two blocks up the road, you're in the woods. And I think that's what draws a lot of people here, is that sense of you're away from the hustle and bustle of the cities. And I think it's very important that we continue to provide that to our citizens instead of driving them farther out, because we've now become another metropolis. But going back to another statement that I made, I think public-private partnership can be a very key factor in our comprehensive plan so that our taxpayers don't have to face the burden of an ever-growing city. And at the same time, we also encourage new businesses to be moving in, signing partnerships with us, and helping us grow, and be, and starting a mutually beneficial relationship that will hopefully last for decades.
Thank you. I'm getting better at this, removing and putting it out. Same question, Ward Two, Matt Westgard.
Thank you, Kevin. First and foremost, you know, the comprehensive plan should be, you know, consistent with our vision and the goals that the community has. That, you know, for size, for transportation, for land use, for zoning, and it should be reviewed periodically. So as Mike said, it's our roadmap. It's a guiding document for council, planning commission, all the EDA, HRA, in terms of how council in the city would like to progress with growth. And as economic times change and whatever, you know, different things come before us year on year, it's a good document to refer back to to say, hey, this is our vision, this is our goal. So from that aspect, it's a very important document that helps guide all of those decisions with, you know, conditional use permits, planned unit developments, the commercial residential developments, and helps keep a perspective on, in our growth. I think the other thing that it does is it keeps us grounded in terms of smart growth and not being lured by, you know, the shiny new project that wants to come to town. It keeps us grounded with the fact of this is where we want to go. This is how we want our transportation plan to look. This is where we want our commercial and industrial districts to be. And should be reviewed periodically as we have started this year, so.
Thanks again. Moving across the aisle, we'll start with Josh on this one. And this is economic development incentives. Taxpayer-supported incentives are a popular method used by municipalities to attract new development. What type of projects should be incentivized with local tax dollars in the city of Elk River?
I think one good example that I'm in favor of for tax-based incentives would be encouraging companies to look at their ecological impact within our community, as far as air pollution, water pollution, soil pollution. When we allow these companies to become more responsible with their pollution, and we can offer them tax credits for doing so at the city level. One that I'm not in favor of, however, not all the time, but most times, is TIF, where I believe we need to take a closer look at how that operates due to the fact that almost everything can pass the butt-for test. And I think far too many businesses and entities apply for TIF. And not so much in Elk River, but in other communities, too many businesses are granted TIF. And I think that's something that we need to monitor very closely.
Thank you. Same question, Matt Westgard.
Thank you, Kevin. Economic development incentives and which projects should be considered? It really depends on the nature of the business. And I think to many of the same things that Josh had said, first and foremost, I think what we look at it for is for job creation. If it's going to provide job creation and sustainability with providing the community with employment opportunities has always been historically one of those things that has gone, looked at favorably for incentives. Some of the other things that should be considered, and I hesitate, because this is always a difficult one. It always comes down to different perspectives. There's a lot of different opportunities to qualify. But if a project or would meet the needs or be consistent with our growth plans and visions and would provide a community benefit by being in town, whether that's economic impact, job creation, housing needs, whatever else, should have the opportunity to apply for those incentives. Along with, we just expanded into the sustainability or the energy-city-natured improvements, businesses that look to have conservation in mind and, I'm drawing a blank on the word I'm looking for, but there's new incentive plans or opportunities out there for those businesses that are looking to provide a energy conservation incentive or program within their development.
Thank you. Same question, Mike Byer.
Thank you. Economic development incentives, I'm open to almost anything that makes sense. And it brings value to our community, not to mention jobs. That is very important to us. Obviously, there's a vetting process that has to go on on anything that comes through here, okay? And as I said before, does it bring value to Elk River? Okay, it has to go through the staff, has to go through a planning commission, has to go through a public forum to make sure that it's right. Also, making sure that it's fiscal responsible to our citizens. We have to make sure of that. So with that said, I'm for anything that makes sense and brings value. And just think about, the more businesses we attract, it's the less impact on our citizens' taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're back to Matt Westgard on this one. What's the main issue or two that you'd like to see addressed in the city of Elk River?
Issue or two to be addressed in the city of Elk River?
I know we've touched on some, too, so, you know, if it's one that we've already talked about, that's okay.
In terms of issue, you know, I think the community is facing some large changes on the horizon, primarily with 169 redevelopment. I think, I don't know that we can imagine what that'll do for the community in terms of expanse of the urban service district or commercials and industrial zones. We have a whole gravel mining district on the north end of town that is starting to transition into reclamation. So I think first and foremost is making sure that we have all these components considered when going through the update to the comp plan and understanding that major project in our near future. Beyond that, I think remaining economical. You know, that city Elk River and its residents aren't any different than anyone else in the nation. And over the last year have been faced with a lot of hardships, from illnesses to job loss to, you know, being furloughed, losing their jobs and being unemployed. I think we have a responsibility, first and foremost, to be fiscally responsible with our budgets. What are we providing and that we're keeping things affordable for the people who, and the citizens that want to live here.
Thank you. Question being asked is, what are the main issue or two that you'd like to see addressed in the city of Elk River? Moving to Mike Byer.
Thank you for the question. Actually, this is the biggest thing that I've come across, that I've talked to multiple people, and I've actually communicated a lot via my Facebook and also in the Star News. And it's the increased communications with the county and the school board. These are the, think about it, the city, the county, and the school board, these are the three entities that control your taxes. These are the guys that are giving you what your taxes are. And I've talked to numerous people about this, and I've talked to people on the city council, I've talked to people as county commissioners. And there's communication, but it's one-on-one and just having a nice little off-the-wall talks and things like that, but they're communicating. So I get that. I believe that we have to have some public hearing-type communication meetings with the county. Let's make sure that we're all on the same page, and the school board. Because if you look at your taxes this year, 2021, the school board was pretty active, very active. So let's have meetings with those, and let's make sure that we're all on the same page, because we're the ones that are responsible for everything that goes on within the county of Sherburne County. And that is one of my biggest items that I am concerned about.
Thank you. Same thing, Josh Hassing.
Thank you. I agree that communication always has room for improvement between the city, the county, and the school district. No one can ever honestly say that communication is perfect. There's always room for improvement. That being said, coming back to a previous topic, Elk River is growing and will continue to do so. Not only is the amount of amenities and businesses and homes growing, the population is growing. And with that being said, there's been a lot of conversations I've had where people feel like a beat got skipped somewhere. They see increased traffic flow going through residential streets because of backups on 169 and Highway 10. And a huge complaint I've heard about this is that some of these people are driving recklessly. Whether they don't, you know, they got off the highway, they don't realize they're driving as fast as they are, or they're in a hurry to get home. I'm not going to assume, but people have been voicing their concerns to me that they feel like their children are not safe playing in their front yards because somebody hopped their curb last week. So one important thing that I think we need to focus on is public safety, and not just in a crime statute or a crime form, but also taking a look at our roads, taking a look at how we control traffic. If a stop sign is effective somewhere, that's great. We need to put that stop sign in. If a stop sign is not effective somewhere else because traffic has shifted, then maybe we need to do a survey and see where, if we can remove that stop sign. People play, you know, kids play in the front yards, and we all know sometimes kids end up in the streets. up in the street chasing after a ball. We shouldn't have to worry because somebody's driving 50 miles an hour down our road. Along with that, though, we need to make sure that we're not just throwing money at the problem because this money does come from all of us as taxpayers. We need to be fiscally responsible, now more than ever, I believe. But I do believe that there is something that can be done where we can actually improve the safety of our neighborhoods as traffic and population continues to grow within our city. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we're starting with Mike Byer on this one. And this is, how will you best work together with other council members who may or may not feel the same way about any given issue?
Thank you for the question. Yeah, I, in my, in my business right now, today, I have 92 employees and I have five fantastic managers, okay? And when I say that, it's because we all have a very good working relationship. We're able to work together as a group, we're able to listen to each other before we make any decisions, and that's the biggest part of it. And I've always considered myself, and you might find this to be a little bit ridiculous, but I've always considered myself a third-base coach. And I'm waving runs in, but I'm also going to stop them at second once in a while and say, hey, let's take a deep breath and let's think about it. So I have, I already have a lot of that in my past, and what I do now is working together with a group, and I look forward to the opportunity to possibly work with this group because I think I can bring value from the leadership style. Thank you.
Thank you. Over to Josh Hesse.
Can you repeat that question one quick?
Absolutely, yep. How will you best work together with other council members who may or may not feel the same way about any given issue?
Thank you. Working with and alongside people who don't agree with me is my daily job. I work with the public every day, and I also work with a large team from the retail employees to the management team to the wholesale employees, who have a different point of view as far as how to solve a problem, or they have a different outcome that they would like to see regarding a problem. And my job is to, first and foremost, act as a leader, as in the position of director, but also to know when to step back, close my mouth, and listen, and see if maybe I'm missing part of the larger picture. Because as an effective leader, you need to know when you don't have the answers, and you need to know who to look for, look to for that answer, whether that be a member of the public or a fellow member of the council. And I believe I would bring that excellent trait to the city council.
Thank you. Matt Westgard.
Thank you, Kevin. I actually think it's healthy to have alternative perspectives. You know, I think that's part of vetting out a good solution. Having an opposing opinion or a differing opinion from another council member isn't necessarily adversarial as much as it is having good dialogue and making sure that we're thinking of all aspects of a particular subject matter. I think the guiding principles into being effective is making sure that you're being a good listener, and being respectful of one another, and then offering alternative perspectives, your own perspective, to the particular subject, and looking for ways to provide a solution that isn't always one-sided. Compromise is always part of negotiations and solutions. So I think that's the, you know, the basic simpleness of it.
Thank you. We have one more. If you can envision a scale, right? There's what the taxpayers want, and then there might be what the city officials envision. How do you go about balancing that scale? And we're starting this time with Josh Hesse.
I think the first step in balancing the scale is figuring out want versus need. What is, what does the public need versus what does the public want? What does the city need versus what the city wants? And if the city has one plan or another, or one idea or another, and that's more of a, this would be nice, or wouldn't this be great? But the city comes with this serious suggestion of this is an absolute need, I think it's the job of the city to, the city council and city administration to realize that the public needs to come first in that matter. We need, first and foremost, we don't get elected to these positions to rule. We get elected to these positions to listen and to lead. And part, like I said before, part of leading is listening. And another, another factor of this is looking at the budget. If the city wants, if the population wants something, if the residents of the city want something, can it be worked into the budget? What will it cost? And once we figure out a cost, where will the money in the budget come from? Does it have to raise taxes? Is there money already freed up that we can use in the budget? And if not, that's another discussion that we're going to have to have via public hearings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Over to Matt Westgard on this one.
Thank you, Kevin. You know, I think in terms of balancing that scale, really, I think, for me, what the, what the city wants shouldn't be any different than what the taxpayer wants. Essentially, the city, we talk about it like a third-party entity that has its own mind and has its own agenda, and it shouldn't have a different agenda than what the taxpayers want. The reason we're elected is to be the voice, the advocate, and the conduit to the constituents of each one of our wards. I think the balancing act comes in the clear communication and the transparency by which we conduct business and talk about things. I think it's safe to say that most people would like to have lower taxes, but not at the cost of cutting essential services. And it's, it's that balance, and it's the clear communication. I think you have to continually, listening to your constituents, shouldn't happen just in an election year, but throughout your entire term. Staying in check, checking in with, you know, the citizens and the constituents, and making sure that you're listening to what they're saying. And it's not just the voting citizens, it's the business community along with that. And it's making sure that you're finding ways to provide those things that the community wants, and balancing that with what everyone and taxpayers feel is affordable.
Thank you. And finally, Mike Byer.
Josh and Matt, you make great sense.
Well, come on, you're supposed to fight. Come on. Haven't you watched the...
Way I look at it, this all pans out during the comprehensive plan. So what's happening right now is, and I actually went online and did it as well, and you have a perfect opportunity right now, Elk River citizens, to get in there and put in what your wants and needs are, and away we go. Because what's going to happen is, is once all this is compiled and the information's put together, there's a committee that's putting this, putting it together, writing this up, and making decisions that'll come before the city council. So for me, it's all about that comp plan. That's where we're going to figure it out. That's where we're going to get the wants and the needs, and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that wasn't, that wasn't so hard, was it? No, we're good. Nice job, guys. We are going to spend three minutes, you'll have up to three minutes each, to wrap up your thoughts, cover any topics that we didn't ask that you'd like to have added. And I believe we're back to Matt Westgard to start this off.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. I just want to say thank you again for hosting this event and airing it and streaming it for, for us. This campaign season, it's been extremely difficult to get, to reach the voters. I have been fortunate to have your support over the course of the last 12 years as your elected city council member. And I would be honored to have your vote again. I'm asking for your vote again. I am, will fight hard and be passionate for the community, and I would like to continue to serve on the Elk River City Council. So regardless of how you vote on November 3rd, I encourage you to get out and vote, and to make your decisions known, and choices of who you want to represent, not only at the city level, but at the state and federal level as well. So thank you for this event tonight. It's always fun to participate. And thank you to Josh and to Mike for participating as well. It's not so bad, is it?
No.
So, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Mike Byer.
Yeah, it's not so bad, Matt. I'd like to thank the chamber and everyone supporting this forum as well. Thank you very much for your time to be here as well and put us together. Also want to thank the fellow candidates up here. You know, Josh, we've had a, we've had a lot of great talks, so I think it's, there's ultimately respect for both parties here as, as we've talked in the, in the past. So what a great community. You've got three gentlemen up here that want to serve the community, and I commend both of you guys for being up here as well. I've been running on three items as discussed in my campaign, and number one was just to support all the citizens and local businesses, meaning get out there, listen, learn, find out their issues, and try to help them. I wanted to keep all the projects on time, because look at it, active Elk Rivers on the Lower Project, 169, just to name a few. There's a lot of projects that are going on right now, and I think it's very important that we stay focused, keep them on budget, and keep them on time, because that's the last thing we need, is these things to drag out. Because if these things drag out, it's going to cost more money to the taxpayers, and they're not going to be very happy. So I think that's one of the things I really want to make sure that we take care of. And the third, which I talked a little bit about, is the communications between the county and the school board. I think it's vital that these three talk more. I know they talk a little bit, you know, one-on-one and stuff, but it's vital that they're all working together to one common goal. Just wanted to let you know that, you know, for the last five months, I've been to almost every meeting. I think I missed one city council meeting. I've also been, after the cameras go off, they have a planning meeting, and I've sat through them as well too, and a few of them have gone to midnight. Matt will attest to that. Debbie will attest to that. But I thought it was important for me to be here, listen to it, and also see those planning meetings afterwards, to get a, get an idea of local government, because, to be quite honest with you, this is the first time that I've run for any kind of political office, but I believe this is more of a leadership position than a political office. So for me, it was an opportunity to learn local government. And so if I feel, I feel that if elected, then I will have the opportunity to come right in, and I'll hit the ground running right away on day one. So I'm ready to serve Elk River, and I appreciate your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Josh Hesse.
Yeah, again, I'd like to thank the chamber for hosting this. I'd like to thank everybody in person and virtually watching this, and I'd like to thank everybody who watches the archive footage later. I, I believe that regardless of who you're vote for or what your beliefs may be at the local, state, or federal level, an educated, an educated vote is always the right vote. And while I do hope for the support of every voter, or as, you know, many as it takes to win, I'm happy either way because I like when people make an educated vote. I think it's great when people are involved in local politics especially. I think it's great when people are involved with their city council members, they know who their city council member is. And I think we're on a, I think we're on a good track so far here in Elk River. And I will admit, I have not been a resident of Elk River as long as my opponent or councilman Westgard has been, but I think that offers me a unique perspective to see what happens when a city loses sight of its goals. And so I came to this city because the city has not lost sight of its goals, and I believe that in a leadership position on this council, I can help keep that on track, and I can work with my fellow council members and the members of the community to keep our goals on track, to keep our budget tight, and to keep our city prosperous. Thank you.
Thank you. And maybe keep meetings ending before midnight?
Yes.
All right, that actually concludes our forum for the evening. I'd like to thank all the candidates for helping to get your message out there prior to the election. I'd also like to thank the Elk River Chamber for arranging this event, and to everyone tuning in tonight or watching the rebroadcast on social media. Thanks to those in attendance tonight as well, and remember to get out and vote on November 3rd. Thank you, good night.